Roll call, please.
Gibson, Papler, Ormspeed.
Here.
Satterfield.
Here.
Stoltenberg.
Here.
Wenland.
Here.
Great. Can I get approval of the minutes for last month?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the minutes of the meeting of January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I can second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
All right. So this is the Plan and Zoning Commission meeting of February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We're a sever- seven-member commission appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council. The commission is a recommended body only with the city council having the final decision. Our regular meetings are held every Wednesday, every third Wednesday of the month at five-thirty here in the council chambers. We review rezoning requests, preliminary and final plats, site development and landscape plans, and planned unit development plans. All right. The next item on the agenda is election of officers. And once again, we only have four of us here out of the seven. Do I have any motions on this?
I'll make a motion to defer again until we have a majority here.
Okay, I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. With that, Greg, you're up.
Mr. Chairman, our first case is twenty-five dash zero zero seven. It's Forest Grove Landing, second edition. It is located at International Drive, essentially in Forest Grove Drive. The request applicant here is Forest Grove Landing LLC. And what they're essentially doing is taking and replating Forest Grove Landing First Edition lots two, three, and four. As you can see, there is a grouping of different types of commercial future land uses here, community commercial to the east of the site. Urban activity makes up the majority of the location for the subdivision with the southern third basically being community commercial. And then south of that is neighborhood light. The zoning surrounding is A one to the southwest. Then we have R five for authentics, which is not a part of this subdivision for that compartment complex. And then C three is the zoning for the entirety of this proposed subdivision. C three zoning is to the southeast and also to the east. And then we have R three and R two zoning directly to the south. Future land use plan and comprehensive plan, essentially in the plating of this goal O one of the land use and transportation element of the comprehensive plan is to promote street connectivity and to proactively designate right-of-way for streets ahead of development and align utility connections with street development. Goal three, growth goal three is to attract and retain business and industry. And that is means investing in infrastructure for emerging commercial areas to provide developable land for industrial and commercial businesses. And that's what a big portion of this particular request is about. This is the first addition, and it consisted of sixty-four point three-one acres. You had lots one through four, and then you had two, three, and A, B, and C outlots. You did not have the dedication of right-of-way yet for this portion of Competition Drive. There was not anything definitive, and this has changed as well on the other side for Competition Drive. And then there was no access for connectivity, for secondary access to the authentics area from down here where we would allow vehicles to come in. What you're looking at in the Forest Grove Landing Second Edition is a smaller plot of forty-seven point seven-six acres with those lots two, three, and four, Forest Grove Drive or Forest Grove Landing First Edition. You have the addition of this thirty-foot wide access coming off of the right-of-way for Competition Drive, and that is giving some circulation to the authentics area. So then the traffic doesn't only have one way in through International Drive. Emergency access can also come through this access point. The change is now you have a lot three here, and then you have Competition Drive with the right-of-way designated for it. Those are the two largest changes. When this is originally brought to the Planning and Zoning Commission, there is a concept plan here on the left, and the areas that were highlighted show the proposed type of right-of-way that was anticipated with this development. There's a plat note that we have that lot two is proposed for development for a right-of-way to be dedicated to the city at some point in the future, creating a public street. And where that will go will be determined once a site plan is submitted, and then a consequential replat of lot two is submitted to determine exactly where this should be. There's also a shared access easement on this plat right now for lots two and three. As we look at the thoroughfare plan again, we have seventy feet of right-of-way for Competition Drive, lots one, two, and four, and then a subsequent lot down here that is not a part of the plat, and then outlot C are basically the boundaries for the for a Competition Drive. Competition Drive will then be connected to the westmost boundary, and then it also will take traffic in from the TBK Bank Sports Complex. International Drive is already poured, and it's anticipated that there'll be an intersection here that will be staged in at some future date. They're blanket fifteen-foot utility easements throughout each of these rights away here, essentially bordering them. And they will set up substantially all the utility connections. For the sanitary sewer, that will come through this lot four right here, the majority of it. Anything that cannot be sewered through that area will come from the Betplex First Edition side, and that will be a determination made by our engineering division about where the sanitary shall be divvied up. We have a pedestrian and trail access. Right now, we have a six-foot sidewalk that runs here that has just been poured, and then beginning at about at this point, it becomes a ten-foot wide trail. There will be eight-foot wide trails on either side of Competition Drive that are anticipated. The remaining, that is the International Drive, what will be placed here on the east side of International Drive, and then on the north side of Forest Grove Drive, has yet to be addressed. It will be when the area begins to develop, and then at that time, certain lot widths will be assigned to those particular trails and/or sidewalks. For our stormwater detention, the lots essentially on this plat will, two, three, and four, will have outlots here and here on the First Edition plat, essentially designated as A and B on the Forest Grove Landing First Edition. Lot one will have to provide for its own stormwater detention area. And staff in reviewing this proposal feels that it meets the goals and plan organization segment of the comprehensive plan for goal one, to develop new land and streets. Goal two, to revitalize downtown in potential high-growth areas. Goal three, to attract and retain business and industry. Staff makes a recommendation for approval of this final plat. I would ask, are there any questions?
Questions in the commission?
Because I have one. So at this point, they're just kind of setting up right-of-ways, thoroughfare, that sort of thing, as opposed to having any kind of plan for an understanding of what potentially could go into that space, right, as far as being developed?
We Competition Drive will be the one that tonight that will be platted anew. Any additional will require us to see exactly the layout on these lots to try to determine where we can see a potential public street best situated.
And Mr. Chairman, that's, if I can jump in, that's noted on the plat, that north-south right-of-way, the one that makes the loop, will be determined at a future date. So when we get a site plan or maybe another preliminary plat to replat this area or something, should come back in, then we're going to try and establish the right-of-way at that point. We're not making them show it now because I don't think the applicant's really ready to do that.
Okay. All right. Any other questions in the commission? Anyone in the audience wish to address? No? Okay. Do we have a motion then?
I'd make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve case twenty-five dash zero zero eight. Final plat for four wins, three two staff recommendations.
I think this is twenty-five zero zero seven. The replat.
Sorry.
All right.
I can make a motion then.
All right. We have a motion here. Do we need a second?
Yeah.
Yep, I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. All right. Now, Roy, I think we're going to move on to case twenty-five zero zero eight.
Okay. Ready for my motion then? No.
I think we have to let Taylor speak first.
That'll be quick.
Well.
All right. Our next case is twenty-five zero zero eight. This is a final plat for win second subdivision, located currently in Scott, unincorporated Scott County. So this is our extraterritorial review. The applicant is Bernard Hoffman. The request is for a two-lot subdivision located just west of Wells Ferry Road, a bit north of Valley Drive. I will note the city of Bettendorf currently has a voluntary annexation application for property shown as lot one in the proposed subdivision, and then lot two is intended to act as a buffer for future development for the applicant. The applicant resides just south of this proposed subdivision. Taking a look at some land use maps and zoning, the city of Bettendorf's future land use map designates this area as a mixture of open space and parks, greenways, neighborhood light, and conservation subdivision. As noted, this is currently still in Scott County and such. It is zoned, the Scott County zoning map zones this as agricultural general, which does not permit higher density residential development, just one building per lot. So this is not, until at such time this is annexed, this would not develop as it is shown. I will note when the property, if and when the property is annexed, the future developer may provide more detailed concepts for the area, so, which may not include a park. I think we kind of covered that in our update to the comprehensive plan, but we're really showing park space on our future land use map to basically bookmark how much park space we would need in the future for full twenty forty-five growth. So that's spread out in our future growth areas. Taking a look at the plat, it's two lots, five acres to the southeast, bordering the applicant's property, and then the remainder for potential future development annexation. No improvements or easements are required with this plat because there's no development being proposed at this time. Each lot has legal access and meets all applicable Bettendorf code for subdivision, extraterrestrial reviews. Staff contends the final plat meets standards, city code, and recommends approval of case twenty-five zero zero eight, and I can take any questions.
Any questions from the commission? All right. We have one person in the audience. Any comments?
No, I just want you to approve it.
All right. Figured so. All right. Need a motion then?
Chairman, I'll move to.
I make a motion.
Yeah, go. I'll let him. He's excited about it.
You're up. Go for it, Roy.
All right. I'd make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve now. Case twenty-five dash zero zero eight, final plat, four wins subdivision, subject to staff recommendations.
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. You're welcome. All right. Now, I think, Taylor, we're on to your zoning ordinance.
All right. So this month, we are on to our next chapter, chapter four. Last month, we did some of the kind of introductory, but we had procedures. Also, we had use definitions. This chapter is kind of a big one. We'll just see how far we can get. But we're, the subject is our zoning districts, and then what's permitted in each of those zoning districts. So sent earlier this afternoon was a brief summary of some potential, some ideas. I'll call them ideas. We don't have as a, there's, we have our current zoning districts. We have identified some issues we've run into, reoccurring issues. Some districts aren't utilized anymore, very at all. Some have identical, near identical standards. I'll point at our R one and R two districts. They're both have the same name, actually, single-family residential. So we kind of tried to, and then we also have issues. We've taken note over time, our, some of our commercial districts are C two or catch-all district. I don't think the results of areas zoned with that district are as predictable. I don't think the intent of that district is being executed with each development. So those are some of the notes that I had. I don't know if Mark has any other.
Yeah, I think, again, let's just talk about process. What we're asking from you again, right, is we have what we call a rough draft of a zoning ordinance, and we're writing it in a certain way. And as I said last time, at its core, zoning is defining zoning districts, what they are, what can go where, residential, commercial, industrial, and defining uses, and then matching uses to districts, right? That's pretty much the question we're asked every time we meet. Does that use fit in that district? We talked about uses last time. We got a good list of definitions. Now, we think we've named all the uses. We added things like breweries and microbrews to our use list, and now we've got these big geographic districts that we want to name out. And we think there's been some problems with them, and we're going to tell you what we think those problems are, and we want you to nod and go, yeah, we think you're on the right path, or no, we think we need to stay with the tried and true. So that's what we're asking. And then I would say even more, higher level, is that the built environment is based initially on us. So when the developer and the builder goes to build something, they got to look at our zoning code and then our building code. And so we create that first layer of that built environment. So we want to get these districts and these uses right, so we have compatible uses and economies at work, and people can live and get to work. And right now, we think there's some problems. And Taylor's going to take you through those problems. I think we need to check our watches at about six-thirty. That gives us one hour in, and then we need to go pause or keep going, okay? Does that make sense? So Taylor, hit them with what you think the problems are with our current districts and how you'd like to redefine them.
Yeah, and we want full feedback. So interrupt and comment. There's multiple perspectives on this, so that I can kind of, I'll do that.
I think, I mean, I think just explaining the ag district problem with the septic is so, such a great example, and you'll get what we're talking about.
Yeah. And a couple of things were sent out. So our chapter summary, which is all text, just kind of a bullet point, what this chapter is. We are combining, actually, RDG already kind of organized many chapters that were in our current ordinance, chapter three, four, five, six, eight, all into one chapter, which is very helpful. Then, so that's been done. Now, what we can, we need to tweak what's actually in that chapter a bit more. Also was shared with some statistics, just kind of some what we have currently in our city. And that is our, just a table shared with you guys, and it's on the screen as well. This is acres for each zoning district. This is what the city is made up of. Obviously, our biggest acreage is going to be agricultural. It's our undeveloped area, and that's where you look at our future land use map and say, that's where those areas were really being contemplated north of Interstate eighty and our northeast areas. But then you see a lot of yellow, roughly four thousand acres, more than four thousand acres are just single-family residential. So that kind of jumps out at you. Take that into consideration when we're thinking about these different districts, and then all the makeup of our other districts as well, as a part of the whole. And then lastly, as we continue discussing tonight, there was, or is it here? No, I'll just use this. We kind of created a, it's not going to show up very well on this one. I'm not seeing the PDF of it. So we'll have to use this. This is kind of a, we'll kind of use this as a guide for discussion. How our, the left-hand column is the current zoning districts, our base districts. And then going to the right-hand side, we can kind of take notes and go over it that way, as a visual guide to some of the text. Does that work? Okay.
Taylor, can I, can I ask a question about your bar chart real quick?
Sure.
The one you had up. So just for perspective on that, was that as-is under current categories, the number of acres and all that?
No, the number of acres is purely our current situation.
Okay.
Is that what you're asking? Sorry.
Yep. No, it is. It's just, I just want to clarify, that's what, that's the as-is.
Yep.
So if we were to take our future land use map and our future, maybe in a perfect world, annexation map and everything else, and how many acres total we might have five and 10 years from now, and what those numbers would look like, it might be interesting just to see.
Yep.
How those categories might shift based on the new areas that we have yet to develop.
True, that's a really good point. And here we have the, so I'll have available here the future land use map and our current zoning map. A lot of visuals tonight, not a lot of text. We do have a lot of red, and we have, we don't have as much of, we'll call it, our light residential in our undeveloped areas. So we do expect there to be some, an uptick in that heavier commercial, mixed-use, higher-density residential on our interstate. That's what we're, especially around the four, we'll call it the four corners of Middle Road and I eighty.
Taylor?
Yep.
Just for perspective?
Yep.
The thirty-two hundred acres of A one, how much of that is north of the interstate?
I do not have that readily available, but we can look at the map, just take a quick gander. You'll see that's, all our A one areas are really going to be more, we have a large C three area, which I don't really know the history of that area, but it's agricultural use. Pretty much everything north of eighty is.
I guess, I guess sixty, seventy percent, just looking at the map of where A one is. And that makes sense, right? Because A one is also our holding district.
It does, but I think it gives us perspective as we're going through all of this. Are we really talking about infill or this vast area that, hey, it's a clean slate?
Yeah, I mean, there are, there are some large pockets of infill that are, I know of one, I can think of, off Monks Road. I think there's a tower, there's like one house on that property. We were just talking about that with staff. I think, now I'm lost here. Yeah, there's a large ag property there, some tower properties that are utilized for towers right now that may develop. We have, of course, the property off of Middle Road. We just have the Genesis Hospital project going in across the street, but that's all ag. Still ag property next to the, between the school and residential there. But yeah, a majority, when you're going north of Forest Grove, you've got some significant chunks of ag, yes.
And the other thing to think about is if we change the definition of our residential districts, or we change the definition of our, some of our commercial districts, certainly you're talking about that future land. That will definitely be impacted by that. But you could also cause a rezoning across the map, right?
Mm-hmm.
Which most people don't think about what zone they live in, but, you know, you may change some allowable uses by doing that, or add some allowable uses. So the really, the code is in play, but so is the map. And so there's some consequences we need to think about. So this is an important chapter.
Yeah, that's a good point, Mark. We have, I think, a really good visual example, and I don't want to jump ahead into the commercial zones, but when we look at our formerly known as the Golden Triangle, we have C twos and C threes kind of mixed, jumbled up. They really aren't distinguishable. They don't act differently. They really don't have different setbacks. They have very few different, the use tables aren't largely different. And that's become a, that's come up in sometimes when that C two district is, say, next door to a residential area. But in this area, it kind of shows how the districts aren't really performing. They're not being distinguished. They're not distinguishable between each other.
They're not very independent of one another.
Yeah, exactly. And that's, that's kind of a problem when you don't, can't really predict what the uses are going to be with a strong confidence to a neighbor, per se. So.
So here, let's, let's, I think we've given a good background. So let's start, I think it's a really good example to show you what the type of changes we're looking for some nods on. And I would just start with that. Number one, create a septic-compliant ag district. So right now, the way our ag district is, is designed is, it doesn't actually work to build a septic-required house, which is what you would build out there. So Taylor, kind of give them that.
So we have a district, well, we just went over A one. We know pretty much what A one is. It's for agricultural, it's large lots. Our A two district has been around for a long time, nineteen, I think, seventy or something. And it doesn't comply with what the county and the DNR require for minimum lot sizes for septic. The county actually has a minimum lot size for all the residential areas because predominantly all their residential areas are septic, and it's two-thirds of an acre. So we have to make a distinguish, we have to make an analysis of whether that zoned area is on septic, is it on a well, are there separation, there separation distances from the well and the septic. We have to make all those determinations just to size the lot, and that has nothing to do with the A two zoning. A two zoning right now is fifteen thousand square feet, which is actually pretty small for that area. So the proposing is kind of separate. We know where our sewer is. We know where Iowa American Water Service is. Separate those out and just define them, make it very easy to really administer. And there's areas that will probably never get sewered and probably never get, well, I don't know about water, but sewer for sure. South of US sixty-seven, there's areas that likely will never get, there's too low, floodplain, et cetera. Pleasant Harbor is a good example. I don't see them ever getting a city sanitary, sanitary sewer. And that's why that's all A two right there. So we're just trying to define, and future areas too. There might be areas, north of eighty, we have a lift station going in that will provide sewer access north of eighty. But there are low spots and undulations and topography. There might be areas where we cannot provide sewer without what, ejection pumps or, that might not be the best interest of a one homeowner or a collection of small collection of homeowners, when they could have a large lot and some septic. So there's, these are thoughts that are, our policy right now is to not allow septic under, I guess, for Brent and that. We do allow septic when there's certain checklists have gone through, correct, for new development.
We really haven't had one in the last ten years.
Not even, we had one on like Tanglewood, if I?
Those were existing that were now converting back over, but no, we have not. Just everything we've been able to do either required a lift station or was able to do gravity sewer.
So, I mean, it probably, it might not be utilized very much then, but it will identify current areas that we know in the future probably, until they get that service connected. So it's really a, from administration standpoint, it's very helpful, and identifies those uses. You know, you can't subdivide that, that, those kind of things. It's just cleared for the rights of that landowner. And then moving, we have a, the second, Mark's terming it, ex-urban residential. That would really be these subdivisions that are, they might have sewer now, but they're on maybe private drives of something like Crestview Heights. They're zoned A two right now. They don't meet all of our standards for a single-family residential. They have no sidewalks, and they have twenty-foot, you know, right-of-ways or whatever. There's all different kinds. It's kind of the oddball. And that would be pretty much what our A two is now, honestly. That's what that ex-urban is, because it still has the small lot sizes. And really, our goal here is to try to get more properties in conformance. We have a problem with a lot of these properties. They might be in that zoning district, but they're non-conforming. What happens then is when you get title searches, or you have appraisers come in, and they have to write that it's a non-conforming lot in a, you know, our zoning district. It's not very helpful to have that many non-conformities. So we're, we're trying to find places for these properties that are existing.
So are you saying you're going to put the ex-urban residential?
So are you saying you're gonna put the ex-urban residential in with the agricultural? Just to give them some of the same rules?
Uh, we can be.
And regulations for them?
Or are you saying the ag district is effectively urban reserved and not have any building on it? Then rural residential is gonna be septic.
Yep.
And not part of the existing sanitary system.
And lots that, that are also.
Two-thirds of an acre.
Correctly for the, that use.
And then the ex-urban is gonna be pretty much everything else that's out there that doesn't have sidewalks.
Yeah, that rural subdivision that got built, that is just, just outside the suburbs, right?
But then they can at least be called ex-urban, even if they don't have a curb and gutter or sidewalk, and they would still be in conformance, so then we don't have appraisers.
Yeah.
Making it unappealing.
Yep, so we don't, so we try to get as rid of, rid of many, um, legal non-conforming uses as we can, we try and code things that are built into conforming uses. Yeah, so they fit something, right? Um, I'm trying to think of, um.
This is a, we have a huge, and we have some A2 properties that might be conforming in a, we have a whole subdivision, uh, what's north of Crow Creek here, uh, Surry Heights, um. That's a subdivision that's been, we, we get variance requests for a lot. We currently have a, of a forty-foot setback in our A2. Um, this subdivision is pretty much meets, it's the fair, meets the standards of our, R1, so we're trying to, it's a conformance. This is our current, we're trying to get existing structures in conformance, um, so we'll, that's the aim there. So kind of cleaning up our current situation.
Oh, is Surry Heights A2?
Exactly, yep.
Oh my gosh. Kind of a good question on it. If we fix some areas and, and get the idea of having non-conforming, you know, complex issues because of that title, evaluations, other things, will we be creating any non-conformity by re-categorizing it by chance?
Not if we're any good. So I had this conversation with Taylor, um, think about, we're gonna jump around a little bit, guys, I think, I think you understand what we're talking about now, so, nothing on process, but we were talking about the old part of Bettendorf, the old, um, central and south, those residential neighborhoods that have lots that are not conforming, um, I think they're zoned R3 right now or R2 or something.
Oh, yeah.
Um, we would probably define those and we can, with, with GIS and a little bit of SMRTs, we can, we can define these areas and probably, yes, could we create a non-conformity somewhere? Sure, we could, but I think we're gonna take more non-conformities off the table than we're gonna create. So if we created a, you know, um, I'm gonna use a, the wrong term, but let's say, uh, historic homes residential district with small lots and, and detached garages is kind of that character, we could just find those on the map, draw that map, create that district. It preserves those uses, because think about what could happen and is happening in other cities. People might come in and buy four or five homes.
Tear them down.
Raise them and put a McMansion on there. Now that totally changes the, the, the old Bettendorf, the old historic Bettendorf that we all love, right? It totally changes that, right? Um, and I don't, I don't think we want that, I don't think our council or planning zoning commission want, wanna see those homes gone. They are very important, and some of them are historic, um, so that's the type of thing we're talking about doing with, with the bullet points on this page.
But let's say somebody does that, then they need to comply with another zoning ordinance of some kind, they've, they've now moved it.
They'd have to get a variance.
Yeah, they would have, yeah, so if you came in and bought multiple lots and then. We would have, we would have bulk standards and lot standards that would maybe prevent that or force them to a special use variance scenario.
So really then the next step would be to go and repaint the town with all the new districts to see whether or not you have the non-conformities, see where the tweaks need to be made before we actually go through and say.
Yeah.
This is.
And we've done some work on that already, we've had intern, our intern last summer do a lot of, uh, lot widths and lot dimension, dimensional standards, uh, so our, our main bulk standards setbacks. Um, setbacks are the easiest to fix. Setbacks are probably the least owners, uh, the noticed, I bet if we do, do some surveys, like the difference between a twenty and a twenty-five foot setback are hardly noticed. Height isn't generally an issue, um, lot size is something that was looked at. And those are, um, you'll really notice, and when Mark's like talking about the old parts of Bettendorf, we're talking about pre-nineteen sixty, pre-nineteen fifty Bettendorf, where, you know, your lot widths are very small. Uh, you have, but that's our middle housing that we're trying to kind of keep, you know, preserve. That's why I think I've called it a preservation, but that'd be, be a subset of our, our low-density, single-family housing district. Um, and we, and that, I believe historically, the R2 district was designed for that purpose. Um, reading through some old papers, uh, it kind of got away, and now we don't really have a, a developer comes in with R1 or R2, it doesn't really matter.
Think about this, like, when we see cases come through, they tend to, something tends to come in as R2, if it's a residential, or C2, if it's commercial, and maybe residential as well. You don't get a lot in between, so they're, they're, the developers are using those big, wide districts to, to do their projects. Maybe that's great, I see some problems with it, especially on the C2 side of things, because we're using C2 mainly as a residential developer tool, not as a commercial tool, and I, I don't think that's what we intended when we wrote the code. Um, if we're looking, if we're going down, I think we've kind of talked about one and two, um, enough.
Are they kind of using those, sorry, they're kind of using those basically to give themselves as much flexibility to do whatever they want?
Flexible, right, and, and I don't know that we're against the flexibility, but we're getting some build outs that I don't think any of us intended when that code was written. So I think we can, we can narrow those down maybe a little bit, or provide other districts that solve that problem.
And we still are having it way down on the list, but we still have our DCAs. And our DCAs, I think we had a really good example of that with, uh, recent rezoning with the Genesis Project. If it's master planned, um, I think the flexibility does exist, so that's what we push. When there's not a concept or a plan that we can stick it to, I think they're le, and the zoning district allows a lot of uses. I think that's where we're seeing a lot of, um, I guess, uh, trepidation on what, you know, what could happen. C2 is that example, and then we, we're really, I think we, we find a lot of conditions.
Think how many conditions we've had to put on these things that come in as C2, right?
Yeah, but also this and this.
Yeah, and then, and then administratively, we have to remember that, keep track of it, ten years down the road, something comes in. You know, Mark's old and gray, he's forgotten, you know, whatever, so they think, you know, say what we want and then put it in the code.
So question for you, before we keep, get too far along here. You've got your proposed zoning districts, are you doing away with the A1, A2? Or is it going to be A1 agricultural district, A2 rural?
So referring to the, uh, this, the numbering kind of put that to the side for now and think of.
Well, my mind doesn't think that way. Put that chart back up if you could.
Uh, yeah.
For just a sec, not, actually not that one, I want the one that you had earlier that shows all of the districts.
Yeah, this right here?
No, the, the actual map of the city.
Uh, the map.
Okay, so this is why my mind thinks this way. There's no way you're gonna write out agricultural district wherever that's at and residential preservation, you're gonna stick with most likely this, right?
A1, A2, A2A, A2B, that, that makes sense.
Okay, good, good.
More.
Yeah, you guys are going all over the place, so I'm just trying to.
A1, A, we're, we're trying, in this particular instance, we have two districts, we're expanding to three.
So with what we've been talking about so far, if we just stick with the agricultural, I agree with you guys.
Okay.
A1 is your agricultural district, A2 is your rural estate residential, ru- uh, rural estate. A3 is your ex-urban residential, and then fit, if you need an A4, find an A4, but, and maybe it's A2B or whatever, but.
Okay.
You know, fit it in there that way, and then go through and get your, A2 should match, I would think, the county's A2.
Yeah.
And maybe the state's A2.
Actually, there are one and our.
Yeah, they should match up somewhere, so it's, again, isn't confusing, it's, hey, if you're gonna be in like the, what we had in front of us today and he comes to subdivided.
Yep.
It's gotta match exactly what the county had as well as us.
So using your turn, your A3 term, if you will, um, uh, s- some of these, and, and it's not our intent to do this as a city, but should some of these edge subdivisions that got built out in the county wanna come in someday?
Right.
How do I zone them? Right now, how do I zone them with what I have? Uh, not A1, I guess A2, but that's probably not right. So that's where we see A3 as a ne- as a necessary tool, right?
Right.
With, if you wanna call it A3 or, or ex-urbia, whatever you wanna call it, but that's what, that's why we think we need it, cause our code is.
I agree, I, I agree, I just wanted to make sure, I was, my, my piece here is that I stick with the A1, A2, A3, R1.
Okay.
But, but then add your additional on, you know, to, otherwise.
Too much change.
Well, it's not necessarily too much change, you're gonna, gonna be able to put a map like you have up there right now.
Yeah, I always didn't have it, I, I wasn't, these are ideas still, so.
I would also say that the approach you're taking as far as the right-hand column, where you're actually saying what you mean. Is much better than calling everything planned residential and giving it a number, and then you gotta go back to the code book to figure out what you're trying to talk about, right?
Yeah, yeah, I, um, there's so much to, about the code document itself, like the readability of the code. Say what you mean, do the titles make sense? Right now, I think it's really confusing, cause we have single-family residential, R1, single-family residential, R2, and I still, it makes my brain hurt. They're slightly different, but they don't say why they're different than the title, so some of that is, is really about kind of readability and, and. We can work on that, RDG has helped us with that a little bit. And then you can, even though you have the long title, you can use the short title, letter, number, division as well, it's not, it's not one or the other, right?
Yeah.
Right, okay, so number three is create conservation sub-district?
Subdivision.
Yeah, so this is, um, a little bit Mark's idea, maybe, um, and so feel free to push back. Here's our thought, uh, when we look at that north part of town, especially the, the north and the east, it is, um, pretty sloped, pretty raviney, uh, if that's a word, imagine Wells Ferry Road where it goes under the interstate and comes back up, you're kind of in the hinterland out there. We think it's developable, but probably not like, um, uh, you know, the typical Ryan Fick, uh, Windmiller subdivision, right? You're gonna have to work around.
Flat sort of thing?
Yeah, you're gonna have to work around those, those ravines. We would give up some density or give them some density and allow the developer to keep those natural areas there, those streams, those creeks and those ravines, and because they're keeping that quote, open space in the subdivision somewhere, we let them consolidate and have more dense development. Now, the overall feel might be, um, might be less dense, might feel less dense, even though your neighbor's house is maybe just five foot away. Um, but you have a, all your backyards go to a big ravine that's left in that status. Um, it's been used other places in the country and, and you come up with some, some metrics about how much green space has to be reserved. You usually shrink the yards down, the lot sizes down, and you give them, um, so they can get more units in it, cause they gotta buy that ground.
Building space for a lot.
Right, cause they gotta, they gotta buy the ravine, right? He's gotta pay for the ravine and. And they're not gonna get discounted, so.
So each property's gonna have a portion of an outlot or, or the.
Yep, or a common area or what have you, and there's different ways to do it.
Association to deal with.
Or we don't have to, you know, that's kind of artsy-fartsy, and if you want an example of one, you can look at, um, the conservation subdivision in Mylan. The conservancy, if you wanna see what one looks like, um, I know a guy helped design that. It's, it's a cool area, right? So you have ponds and you keep that natural look, it feels very buticolic, but the houses are actually pretty close together. Maybe as close together as they are in our old downtowns. I think we need to bounce this off of developers, I'm not sure they buy into it yet, and we're gonna do that. But I think we, we don't wanna do out there is start building on highly erodible land, filling in a bunch of streaks, creams, streams and creeks. Those causes problems in the long term, so we're trying to get around that. And I would open it up to your discussion thoughts, hey, Mark, that's too highfalutin, we're bread and butter, single-family homes, so.
I would say there's, I at least have a lot of clients looking for the feel of wildlife in their backyard, forest, creeks, streams, whatever, um, what have you. And a lot of times we have a hard time finding it here in Bettendorf or Iowa even itself. And the majority of it that seems available is over in Illinois, they don't wanna build in Illinois. So I think that this might actually go over well.
Yeah, I thi- I think it's a good idea, actually, cause it's gonna also help with, uh, erosion and other things as well, if we don't have, if we're not wiping out existing plants that then have to actually, right?
Right.
Yeah.
There's a stormwater system in place, nature made it, now, we could develop it and put a new one in, we know how to do that, but.
I think it makes a lot of sense too.
And this would align with our future land use map, and that was the kind of the origination of the, um, remember we have these areas north of 80 mostly, uh, some areas in our eastern annexation area that are, you know, very, near streams or high slopes, uh, floodplain area, they have floodplain nearby or, or they're covered forest land, so, um, yeah, so it's, that's in alignment with our comprehensive plan.
And effectively you're dealing with the land as you find it, as opposed to trying to just make it a piece of paper, right?
Flat, or whatever, yeah.
Yeah. I think it's a good idea.
And it's gotta pencil out, and that's where we're gonna have follow-up meetings with our, on the public side with our developers and go, you know, will this pencil out for you guys if you can do this?
I think it's a good idea.
Require more creativity on their part, which is probably a good thing as well.
Yeah, but it may create a pretty high-value product, cause I, I would imagine, even those, even though those yards and things are gonna be smaller, the houses are probably pretty large, and you could have associations around the pond that would make it a pond for the association, that type of thing. So you kind of get some amenities built in.
All right.
Did we talk about number four enough? Should we talk about that again?
Um, okay, I can jump in on that, um, number four on the summary sheet. So we currently have, uh, R1 and R2, Mark is, and I've repeated, both singly fam- single-family detached. RDG actually recommended, um, combining these, uh, art into one single-family, like a low-density district. Um, there's a lot of movement also, other cities, uh, the development trends, um, even at the state of trying to, you know, really find, create more housing opportunities. One thought, one, uh, was to add a, some type of a method for adding these villas. We call them single-family attached homes, um, so we have those at, uh, west, that's, Kevin Dolan's, uh, the, you know, the, not McClellan Heights, but the Heights, the Heights. Those are single-family attached homes, they have, uh, forty-five foot wide lots. They really act and feel very much like a single-family detached subdivision. Maybe there's some method to incorporate them into our zoning with a special use. We're getting into a little more of the permitted use table, which we'll jump in the next meeting, but there's, those are just ideas, we're throwing them on the wall and seeing how we react. Uh, but for sure, combining both the districts into one would require us to pick one setback. This wouldn't require subdivisions to do the minimum setback, I think you'll find that often. Uh, we can still have, we still have subdivisions that, um, will, the, the woodlands, or not woodlands, but Wilderness Point, I think it has forty-five foot setbacks or fifty-foot setbacks, um, so there's still developers out there that will build more than the minimum. Um, but having a, a standard twenty-five foot setback for our single-family, our low-density, um, residential is administratively easier, uh, you're not really running into conforming issues, conformance issues because you're reducing it. It, again, it doesn't require the minimum, uh, it simplifies kind of the administrative and, uh, from a zoning perspective. And then Mark mentioned kind of accredit in a subset district that, right now, we treat lots that were platted prior to nineteen fifty-seven as lots of record, and there's a big, long list of how you determine the setbacks for that, it's a if and or, uh, it's all based on, cause they were not developed for car-oriented, uh, or they had alleyways. Um, some of them were pre-car, actually, so they're very narrow lots, um, so maybe, and that's kind of the idea of actually taking those with a zoning district. It could be an overlay, honestly, or it could be its own zoning district, those are just some ideas, um, with that preservation. Um, for, versus having it deep within the code and nobody really knows how to even read their own rights for their property, which is really a problem now with those people, how big can I build, what's my? How big can I build? What's my setback garage, et cetera?
So I think there's two big gut checks in this one. Do you think R one and R two are similar enough and just need to be combined?
Yeah.
Do you buy off on that?
And I agree, I agree that the old, uh, the old districts areas needs its own little area, its own little category.
Thirdly, do we start? I think responding to the, to the housing crisis, really, do we start allowing as a special use permit? These duplexes, um, and, and attached homes in that newly combined R one.
Or just attached homes, maybe.
There, I kind of think they should have their own category and, and not be filtered in. We have some of those in commercial districts too. It's, they should all have their own. They're attached. If they're two, two residents attached that are not apartments, not condos for rent.
Thinking like, is attached homes like just a duplex essentially?
Lot underneath subdivided, whether you have two separate lots or you have, uh, tap, under our code, a duplexes. Two housing units on one lot.
We don't have very many in Bettendorf. You have a lot more in Davenport. You have older houses pre nineteen hundred that were subdivi-. Uh, split and they have a stairway going up and then you have a single story. Or sometimes triplexes, they're actually common in Davenport. We don't have the housing stock of that age and that size, um, that I know. We don't have very many.
So the thing that happened behind Hope Church.
Those would be town homes.
Those would be town homes, cause they're three in a row.
So where would that fall?
Right now, we didn't, that would be, we have it in our R three, starting in our.
It would not fit in, even if we did the combined new, um. R one, R two combined with a special use for duplexes, that wouldn't fit. That would not be it. A duplex would literally be. Two dwelling units in one building. That's it.
So would that be like a high re- high density residential?
Medium, like a medium density, yeah. Really what, it's what it is today, yeah. Um, I'm trying to find here the.
I think, I think, I mean, just reading the room, I think there's less buy in for that, for that duplexes and attached homes in the R one, R two.
On the screen, you can kind of see our current, this is getting to the permitted use table, which we'll dive into the next meeting, but really you can see the. The curve of, uh, allowed building, uh, structure types. You have your single family detached, your single family attached. Duplex, townhouse and multifamily. That pretty much, that covers them all. And we have our. Really our six dis- seven districts, I guess. Um. And they really, right now, a single family detached is allowed, is only allowed in four out of seven of those districts. Three districts encompass the rest of the building types. But going back to that. Going back to this, those, those two districts are only single family detached. That's, that's kind of what we're getting at.
That's low density development. That's kind of what Bettendorf has always been. Do we wanna dip our toe into a little more density in our. In our R one, our new or mashed together R one, R one point five.
Think you moved the density.
So, so can I ask a question about that for a second? So if you had, and I know there's a few examples out there where we have some, I'll call them. Nice homes in an R three. And could they theoretically put those into a duplex then? And create a separate entrance and have it like they always sell them up the old townhouses?
Like a, like a, a conversion?
Yeah, I think he said, and they could just convert that to a duplex.
For their duplex standards, uh, again, again, we don't have very many duplexes, so we'd have to look into that.
That's basically all your old homes in Davenport that are duplexes. That's what they did. They just took up.
Their conversions, yeah. So you took the old mansion.
It's our, the two family, uh, residential district, what they call their, a lot of, uh, cities will call it two family residential. That's, that, that's a possibility, um.
It's, we don't, I mean, maybe we're solving a problem we don't have. We, we're not turning down a bunch of duplexes, you guys. It's not like. People are asking for these. We're just trying to be more flexible and try to allow as much, um, you know. Options at that lower end of the, of the housing scale until you get to the three in a row townhome. And right now, it's, it's a single family home. Um, we don't really fit duplexes very well in very many places, but we're not. I'll be honest, we're not being asked about them. So maybe, maybe we're solving a problem.
Are we not being asked because we don't have the option?
I, I don't know. I don't, I mean, I think our build, our, our meetings with our developer community is gonna be, and builder community is gonna be interesting.
We, we had a duplex explosion when they went to C five and they got plenty of special use permits. And they started to crop up along Fifty Third Avenue and some other areas. And then it went out of sort of fashion and now it's the townhomes. That are becoming the big thing. So it's a matter of taste that shifts locally and nationally.
Yeah, that's true.
I think we have to be careful of that because I think to Roy's question, if I did understand what he was saying. In the R three, when we have one of these big McMansions, whatever you wanna call them. If they're in an R three, can they be converted? Cause they're in an R three to a duplex.
That's, and that's currently.
That's where I'm going. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And, and at this point, that's not gonna happen. A downturn in the economy, something happens. And before you know it, you have a number of them being converted. That's again, exactly how it happened in Davenport years ago. So we need to be paying attention to this and plan ahead.
That's right where I'm going, yeah.
Yeah, and maybe, and I think a distinguished factor here is, uh, the way we have our, um, our, our use types aren't really. When we talk about single family, that's a one, that's one dwelling unit on one lot. Single family attached is still one dwelling unit on one lot with a party wall between those two lots. Townhouse, houses are one dwelling on one lot. Now we could define it that way. We also have condos. But one dwelling on one lot with multiple party walls, so you have them boom, boom, boom. And we have up to, oh, more than two. So there's still single family a sense, but we've kind of gotten into, uh, um, we call them multifamily sometimes. Um, our multifamily have a different stand, a different construction type and it relates to building code as well. Um, so I just kind of wanted to point that out.
I just wanna give the commission a reminder, we're at our three minute warning, if you wanna wrap up at six thirty. And I, I will introduce the topic. I don't think we're ready to dive in tonight, but we're talking around right now accessory dwelling units as well. Where, where are those gonna fit in our city, if at all? And right now, they don't really have a, a clear, our code is unclear. Uh, at best on what an accessory dwelling, accessory dwelling unit is and where they can go. Um, they are also being talked about, if you've, you know, you know, read the news, follow the literature, uh, as one of the ways to solve the housing crisis. Is to have these, uh, because they create a place for grandma, grandpa, mom and dad to stay. Uh, get them out of their house, open up that for a new family to move into and they can live with their caretakers, their, their kids. Happens to be a, a life. I actually live right now, um, although I don't have an accessory dwelling unit, but, um, so I do understand the need. Just saying the state might solve this for us.
Accessory dwelling unit, you're talking about a back building.
The mother in law suite, yep. It's, it's a, it's an accessory structure. Detached. And, and I think that's, we're probably with, you know, the time we have left here, that's something we have to think about as well. And I think the state may be jumping in and saying thou shall allow.
Yeah, there's some legislation being proposed and that doesn't mean it's gonna be passed, but it's definitely a hot topic. Trending nationally, um, forcing it, so it's.
So I guess one of the things we've been trying to do is encourage land conservation, right?
Correct.
And higher density.
I, I believe in that, yes.
So, so I guess. In my mind, to my mind, you know, based on what, uh, Glenn had said, with, with the. The idea that. There's gonna be potentially trends back and forth from duplexes to townhouses and whatnot. Probably need to be able to have. All the different types of higher density residents in. Available to be built. If a developer so choo- chose. So we. Feels to me like we need to have, make sure we have the appropriate districts to be able to accommodate those things, right?
And I think we do for all of them right now, except for ADUs. We don't really, our code does not really give us a clear direction where ADUs. It's almost anti-ADU in my opinion.
Actually, to piggyback on that, I think the ADU, just at this point, my mind would say that it should be a special use permit. So that we really have a, some control over it. If, hang on a second, cause if, if, if we throw it like in over to the A three, four or five and we do it. And before you know it, we've created a situation where now we have a rental unit on the back of the house. When mom or grandma or moves on or, or any of like that, anything like that.
Yeah, I did one. Um, I built literally for someone's grandma and grandpa, um, an addition onto their house. On Monks, several years back, I don't know, six, seven years ago, maybe. Um, for, yeah, for that reason, and it was, it is literally an accessory dwelling unit attached to the house. But we had to put, I don't know.
Door in or something.
Yeah, we had to put, yes, you're right. We did have to put a door, a, a separate door for entrance for it. And we also had to put some. Something in legal writing that said it wouldn't be rented out, you know, and that that transferred with the sale of the house. It wouldn't ever be rented out as a separate dwelling unit to stop it from running, but.
There's nothing preventing us, I mean, really, if you would refinish your basement and put all amenities in there. That would qualify as a dwelling. You're talking kitchen.
I did about half a dozen of those during COVID.
We don't see that. We don't know, we don't.
Because people needed them.
Those are within the confines of the primary structure, so it's not, so that's a little bit different than an accessory dwelling unit, right?
They had a basement walkout.
So an accessory dwelling would be non-attached then, is that accurate?
That's, that's the more correct term. Our code doesn't really give you that. Modification of that within the four quote, four walls.
We can give some more information on ADUs as far as, there's tons of information that, that's been such a hot topic. We can kind of lay out the, a little simplistic, uh, there's more, there's different types and there's different ways.
It seems to me where you have these bigger rural lots, um, and they fit. You know, they fit the size of lot. They make sense there as maybe a special use.
They're permitted in the county as special use.
They don't make sense to me in my, just my view of the world and taking one of our old downtown small lots and they take the garage and they. They insulate it and they put a bathroom in it and turn the garage into a house. I don't like that. I don't know why. I got, well, parking and just other things bother me about that. Um, so.
So we need to work it in, in a way that allows. Each one of them to be looked at, basically, and not just.
Right, because people will find a workaround anyway. Like I have clients who wanted to build a new house and there was an existing house. They wanted to live in it while they were building it, but they couldn't, so we just attached it and it became one house.
Yeah, there's. And we're not trying to.
But I'm saying like, it would be better to have a plan for things that are necessary and that are being requested than to have workarounds happening.
Yeah, I think we have more pressure for ADUs than we do for duplexes. I don't. I wanna build a duplex, help me, but I do get the ADU phone call.
We do get a lot of them, yeah.
A true, a true ex- extra structure on the lot, not. If you wanna turn, turn out your basement, I don't, I don't care. As long as it meets code, I don't, you know, building code, I don't care.
Or you can build out your garage with, you know, heating, bathroom, saying, just don't put a bed in it and that doesn't, you know.
How do you stop it from becoming a rental then? If you don't want it to be a rental or you don't want it at Airbnb, you can't really patrol that stuff, can you?
Right now, I don't think we have a lot of control in that, in that regard. Covenant's probably the way to do that and on the private sector.
Yeah.
Covenant's, but not if it's an old neighborhood.
Yeah, it's tough.
Six thirty four, Mr. Chairman.
Right.
This is interesting conversation. I enjoyed it.
We will continue. And the, and the next, the, so that's the residential stuff is really the, probably the toughest, uh, thickest stuff. Um, we have some ideas of the commercial, of course, but I think those will be a little easier to, um. Guide through, um, but we can do it at our next meeting if we have time.
All right, sounds good. Um, commission update, anything in particular? No?
Just to let you know, we do have, um, the mayor has selected a, uh, potential replacement for Mr. Volcarney. Uh, we're just doing the vetting and the, and the, that background process and I think that will be coming forward in the next, um, first of March. Council meeting.
All right then, I guess we stand adjourned.